Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Woodruff. I'm the Chair of the Policy Committee. I would like to call the Oakland County Network Committee of the whole meeting to order. Ms. Barrett, could you do the roll call?
Mr. Lansman.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Present.
Dr. Giles. Pastor Jones.
Present.
Finance Committee has quorum.
Thank you.
Ms. Dr. Hans. Ms. Newman.
Present.
Mr. Torres. Ms. Root, she did notify me that she would not be in attendance tonight. Ms. May. Mr. Cowan.
Present.
Ms. Woodruff.
Present.
So at this time, Policy Management Committee does not have a quorum.
Thank you. We need to vote. Oh, actually, we're going into public comment. Is there anyone online?
If you are online and wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand.
Anyone present in the room that wants to speak?
Sheila, is there any way we can get these monitors to work?
Where Chris go?
Well, there will be a second opportunity for a public comment later in the meeting. We need to vote to approve the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, if all are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries. We will have Mr. Ben Bodkin come to the podium. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, members of the Board. I'm here to introduce Mr. Bodkin. He's with Capital Services and he is a legislative guru and supports us with information, guidance, and direction regarding the moves within the House and Senate, including bills that we can anticipate, that we can influence, and he's here to give us an update regarding where we stand currently with respect to our legislative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members. Thank you for having me. Those of you who I have met and know and have known for some time, it's good to see you again. Those of you I have not met, it's a pleasure to meet you. It's a pleasure to be here. I am Ben Bodkin. I am a partner with Capital Services in Lansing. That is a lobby firm that works on legislative issues on behalf of a range of clients. We do consulting work for OCHN and very happy to be working with you now for many years and look forward to working with you going forward. So the lay of land in Lansing is this, they are not in session right now. You may have heard that after Election Day, there were two members of the Michigan House that were elected to mayor of their local town, one in Warren and one in Westland, both down here in southeast Michigan. And so the majority for the Democrats went from 56 to 54, to 54 to 54. So it is a majority still for the Democrats, but it is technically tied. There isn't enough, there aren't enough Republican members to overthrow the Speaker, Speaker Tate, and so the Democrats maintain a majority, technically speaking, which means they continue to set the, they will continue to set the agenda for things that are voted on, continue to control committees. The committees have not changed. So aside from putting new Democrats or existing Democrats to fill those committee spaces that were left vacant by the two that won mayorships, that's really the only change that'll happen. Because they are not able to vote things off of the floor, however, without a Republican vote to help, and because it's, it has been important to the governor to move up the Democrat primary for president from early March to late February, and because of some political logistics and how things take effect after signee die and after the legislature is done and that kind of thing, the legislature has adjourned as of, I think that November 14 was the last day, although they were done one week earlier than that. So they are adjourned for the year when they resume session in January. It will be the same session, but a new calendar year, obviously. So bills don't die now, but it will be a few more weeks here before they get started legislatively again in January. At that time, they will still have a 54-54 majority. It's a weird thing to say it that way, but that's what it is. And so, that said, I think you'll probably see a lot of bills kind of piling up on the House floor for when those seats get filled. Those are reliable Democrat seats, for the most part. Obviously, you know, things can happen, but that's why they do the votes. But pretty reliable Democrat seats, and I would expect that those will be filled by Democrats and they'll resume a 56-54 majority as soon as those are filled. Those will get filled. The primary is January 30th, and the general is April 16th. So it's going to be some time before there is a working majority for the floor in the House. So I think you're going to see things pile up now. I think that that's, I think we're going to have plenty of committee work to do and the budget will need to happen, so those things will kind of power through as normal. But I think that you'll just see the House bills or the Senate bills that are passed by the Senate kind of pile up on the House floor and wait till they've got a majority after the 16th of April. So I think May will be very busy. I think June will be very busy, and we'll go from there. So a couple of things, just to talk about here, the presidential primary, by the way, will be February 27. Usually, it's that first week of March. By doing, by moving it up, really just a week, we are, we will be then the first large industrial and most diverse state in the Dem primary to vote. So I think that makes, that will make Michigan very significant. In addition, I think that's probably going to be pretty important to President Biden. But that was part of what got us to where we are today, so just to toss that out. Couple of things that have been going on in the House and Senate. We had to reapprove the Healthy Michigan Plan, basically, so that got done early this fall and October. And so that is done. We don't have to worry about that, which is great news. We've got other things to worry about, obviously. There was, there is a bill that would allow CMHs to do competency exams for, for kids that are, that are in the JJ system for misdemeanors. Try to kind of move some of those cases forward a little more quickly, and folks are confident that CMHs can do that. That has been, though, kind of relegated to the Health Policy Committee this year and hasn't moved. So we'll see if that happens or not. There are a couple of bills for a health exchange in Michigan. Again, I don't know how likely that is to occur, but they're, they are out there, and I think that probably would generate some significant discussion if that were to happen. We've got a couple Needle Exchange bills, 5178 and 79, and that would kind of formalize and statute the legality of a legal, of a needle exchange program, that kind of thing. It would set the intent, the intent is that it would create some immunity for those that are involved in a needle exchange program while they are exchanging needles, right? The bills are written a little more broadly than that, and I think some people are a little worried about how broadly they're written, but I think in the end, those will get, those will get put into a form that's, that's probably pretty acceptable for most folks. There are a couple of bills that would license and allow funding, state funding for CCBHCs that were literally just introduced in, in November here. And so I'm kind of still running the traps on those to see what the intent there is, what are we, you know, what, what is the issue we're trying to solve? What are we solving? What are we doing? Where are those going? You know, that kind of thing. So more on that later. And then there, let's see. The other issue is, there, there are two privatization bills that have been introduced. They've been introduced for a long time. They're not going anywhere, so you don't, we don't have to worry about that this term. Just for your knowledge, though, there are 45, 76, and 77. It's Representative Vanderwall, who was formerly Senator Vanderwall and used to chair this Senate Health Policy Committee. He called me before he introduced those last spring and said, "Ben, I'm going to introduce these. I don't want to give you a coronary," right? "I don't expect them to go anywhere. I don't expect they'll go anywhere. I just feel like it's a thing that needs to be talked about and, you know, I want to introduce the bills." And so nothing has happened with those. Democrats have zero interest in taking those up. They are not a thing we need to worry about. I just didn't want you to see that and, you know, and wonder why I didn't talk about it. That is my report. I'm happy to take some questions if you have them, and I can try to answer.
Mr. Lansman.
Thank you. I actually have only three.
Oh, well.
For short, and I know, unusual. So you mentioned on legislation with the 54-54 split with a Democratic majority. Is there, are there any, so not a whole lot's going to happen, but are there any non-power bipartisan legislation that might happen during the winter months?
Yeah, I, I, obviously, there are, you know, a good portion, more than 50% of the bills out there are bills that everyone's, you know, probably good with, or they can work to a point. The question will be, now that we're kind of entering an election year, right? Now that November's done, we're kind of in that cycle now where we've got a, we've got an election coming. The House is up during the cycle, and, and so the question will be, what are the Democrats willing to trade for Republican votes on things? And what are the Republicans hoping to get from the Democrats if they, you know, offer votes? Sometimes that's nothing, right? Sometimes that's, we just sort of all agree to this thing. Sometimes it can get, it can get pretty horse-trady out there, right?
Yeah.
So I think, you know, I, I think once the holiday season is over, we will know a little more in January, how that 54-54 split is going to work in the world. I just, I think it's, it's pretty new right now, and we haven't really had an opportunity for them to talk to each other with this new dynamic involved. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I know I didn't answer your question there, but...
No, but do you think it, it really won't make any difference, at least until after the primary? And then we see what shakes out at the primary to see how tribal the Dems and the Republicans will become?
Um, no, I think it's going to start before that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the primary is at the end of January, so...
February.
For, for the, for the special, for the two seats.
I'm talking, well, that's pretty much a gay.
I'm talking about the presidential. Oh, yeah, I don't think the presidential has as much to do with how the Dems and Republicans in the House are going to deal with each other.
Okay.
Um, I just, I mean, yes and no, but it's, that's less important, I think, than the fact that they've got four months to sit there and stare at each other, right?
Yeah, they'll have, they'll want to do something.
I hope so.
And the other you mentioned, so that carried actually a second question I had, but that, that works, so only two then.
Okay.
The other question is, you were mentioning about the JJ, the assessments for the kids with misdemeanors. Is that going to get funded for the CMHs through MDHHS and Medicaid? Or would that get funded, our service for that, would they get funded through DOC, through the Department of Corrections?
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be DOC. Juvenile justice is generally handled through the local court, so it would be a county, it would be a county expenditure, basically, and then that is usually half reimbursed by the state through the Child Care Fund. So it just, I don't know this much about everything, you guys. It just happens to be a thing that I know something about because I used, I still work in juvenile justice. So it'd be a county expenditure split in half with the state. And right now, they're done at the State Forensic Center, Hawthorne, I think. I, I don't, I don't know the probability of this happening or not. This, I, I think that there are, there are little devils here that we don't maybe fully appreciate or understand, and it's going to just, not that it couldn't happen or is not a good idea. I think it is a good idea. I just think we've got to take some time and really kind of ferret out what this looks like, okay? And who's paying and when, and how quickly it's required and all that good stuff, yeah.
All right.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Those were my questions. My pleasure.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Cowan.
Thank you. So I saw in Gunware on Friday, a little article that said Medicaid to include community health worker services in '24, and that DHHS announced that Medicare will cover community healthcare worker services to promote preventative care and address, address health disparities. I was surprised it wasn't covered before, but apparently it is, and I just am trying to, wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I, I don't know how that affected our, the budget and how many more applications per payment for this we're going to see, this type of services. So I just will ask you to...
Yeah.
I, it just appeared on Friday, so I...
I'll check that out.
Yeah, if you could check it out and just get back to us, that's all.
Yeah, for sure.
Just want to, you know, a little surprise announcement, you know, two weeks before the, the effective date. And I don't know who was pushing for that. I, 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 maybe it was a gap that was in the coverage that they are, are doing, but I, I'm more concerned, I'm glad to see it, but I would just want to know what kind of, if you could report back to our team.
Yeah, maybe there was a waiver that was done or something.
What financial impact is this going to have, if any?
Yeah.
You know?
Okay. Absolutely. Yeah, we'll check it out.
I thank you. Yeah. And then the other thing is, just on the legislative calendar, I mean, by the time these folks get seated, it's going to be, you know, April, early May even. I don't know how that, that works once you get, you know, voted in. And typically, they try to get through the budget in an election year and not too much more, but it sounds like we may have much more.
Well, and it may, there may not be much more. I don't know.
Okay.
I, I mean, I can tell you that I think that, I think that the House will run committees just like they do, which is the majority of the work that, that people like me work on, right, is in committee. Once it's on the floor, you're kind of, you know, hopefully you're done with messing with it. But, you know, again, they're going to have to hold things on the floor, including the budgets. My guess is the Republicans will not give them free votes on budgets. I wouldn't if I were them.
Right.
It's the only thing they got to do, right? So I get something for it. And so, again, that's just my opinion of what I would do. So, yeah, I think May and June are going to be busy. Generally speaking, the budget should be done by the Fourth of July. That's the kind of traditional deadline. I think the law says technically July 1st, but traditional deadline is July 4th, so May and June are going to be busy, but, you know, it's nothing, I don't think it's impossible because they will have done the committee work, right?
Right. So I won't ask you the question of what is everyone doing with their idle time, but be there as it may.
Doing, we're doing, I'm doing this.
No, not you, not you. I'm talking about the legislature. You're, you're, you're working.
Yep.
But my biggest concern going into this year for the budget is, of course, our funding is from various sources, including federal. But with respect to the state portion of it, I'm very concerned that all this extra money that has been floating around, I'll call it the COVID money in a big umbrella, with additional monies from the feds, ARPA money that communities have spent, things of that nature, and that counties, the county has spent, that money displaced regular budgeted money. And people were in, and, and various municipalities and other governmental agencies were able to do a little bit more. That's gone now, okay? That's gone.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what the revenue forecast is going to be, but my, I'm just very concerned that the, the slicing and dicing is going to get out there, and where is that ax going to fall? Because it never falls equitably. It always falls somewhere more than others. So I'll just ask you to please keep an eye on that as they, the, the, the stuff moves through, and if you need somebody to come up there and scream and yell, I'll volunteer.
I think that's a, that's a very valid concern.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely a valid concern.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays to you. I will now turn this portion of the meeting over to Mr. Lansman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. At this point, the next item on the agenda is, I believe it's CIT. And Trish, you're going to come up to present?
I am...
Online, I see you. Now I see you.
Yes, I am presenting virtually because I feel better than my voice sounds, but thought it was best for me not to come in person tonight.
Okay. Before we get started, I know the first item is an ARPA fund extension. Typically, that's, you know, the, the finance side doesn't cover not, we don't cover things that are policy and program for funding, so why is this one on our agenda?
I don't know if I can answer that question.
Is it just because we're doing a financial thing of extending funds from one year to another?
This not, this is not a program of services, is that what you're referring to? This is additional funds that's coming down from the county for ARPA, so it's on the finance end to show that that time period of that contract is extended. So this is not a service-free contract that the Board would typically not approve.
Okay, thank you. Well then, let's cover this one. I was going to say we get a pass on it if it did, but it's, you have the floor, Trish.
Thank you. We are getting additional time to spend out the full $500,000 in ARPA funds that we received last year to expand our CIT Oakland program. We were able to draw down about half, and the county has approved us to be able to use the other half through December 31st. So no additional funding, but it would be just a change in the date from January 31st to December 31st.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the Finance Committee? All right, thank you. Could I get a motion from the Finance Committee to approve this extension request?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support?
Thank you. Is there any discussion? We don't need roll calls for this, right, Sheila? We can just, okay, great. All those in favor of this extension, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That one was easy. How about the co-responder program?
Hopefully, this one will be just as easy. We were approved by the Board of Commissioners to receive $1 million in ARPA funds to expand our co-responder initiative. We have currently four coresponders in six communities, and this will allow us to hire five additional coresponders in multiple communities, in addition to have a co-responder supervisor as our team continues to grow, and some other programmatic enhancements as well.
Are there any questions? Well, I'll ask for a motion to approve this then discussion.
So moved. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any questions or discussion on it?
On that, and, you know, I'm really excited about the idea that we've gotten that extra money because we certainly needed it. That co-responder program is just excellent. The criteria that's being used, and I'm speaking...
Because she's, she's remote, she may not be able to hear you.
I'm sorry, so what?
Can you talk into the mic because she's remote?
All right, there we go. Thank you. It's surprising in my profession.
You're welcome to hear.
Again, I think that the, the co-responder program is just excellent, and it's doing a great job. For the additional, I think you said five, for the additional, what is the criteria for selecting the different cities that those five coresponders will go to? And I don't know if it's based on the call ratio. I understand they've had some exciting, because I think over 5,500 or something like, 50,000 calls or something like that. But, but what I'm most interested in is how is the breakout being done, and what criteria are they using in adding those five, five coresponders?
That's a great question. We're looking at a multitude of different things. A lot of times, it's whether or not the law enforcement agency would first welcome this program in. We look at data based on call volume, the day, the type of calls. We look at the infrastructure and what it would take for them to sustain a coresponder. So this funding is just pilot funding, and then there has to be a sustainability plan for them to continue afterwards. We've been having ongoing conversations with law enforcement agencies who have been looking to bring on a coresponder, and just need some seed funding to start that and to really show its effectiveness. So we're currently in draft contract with five different communities right now. For two of those coresponders, we'll utilize these funds. One community is funding it on its own already, but we have built different relationships with our law enforcement agencies. Some of them want coresponders, some of them don't. So when we're in those discussions with them, we do look at all of that data as well. But ultimately, I know our Board of Commissioners would like to see 15 coresponders in the county. That's, that's the goal that they have. We are looking to make sure that we can cover our county where most appropriate with the data.
Okay, now, the follow-up question I have on that is, how has the co-responder, the role, the identifiable work that they do, been cascaded to the communities or down to, I guess, at the street level? There are a lot of people who just don't understand what they do, and they're, even though they are there, and we know they're doing a great job, but I, I don't know if the community is totally connected with them to understand who they are and what they do, and I, I don't know if there's a plan in place to sort of educate the community on that so that they are more familiar with the services that those coresponders offer.
Absolutely. We work closely with our communications team, so in addition to press releases, websites, social media, all of our coresponders also participate in community events. So whether it's trunk or treats, or there are different health fairs that are out there, all of our coresponders will participate for those in their community so they can get out and meet the community more.
Thank you. Other Finance Committee folks that may have questions? Adam?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other Board members that may have questions? Uh, yes, John Paul, sorry.
Do we know what communities they will be going into, or is there...
Um, do we know what communities they will be going into, or is there, um, is that information disclosable, what, who we're talking to, or who are, what communities we're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely, um, one of the communities that we're um, working on a contract with right now that will be funding the co-responder themselves is Waterford, um, so as a fellow Waterford resident, and I know you are too, I was happy to see that. Um, the other four communities that we're working with currently right now for two co-responders are Madison Heights, Hazel Park, Royal Oak, and Ferndale. Those are the only communities right now that we have confirmed for new co-responders, but we will continue to um, reach out with agencies that we have um, been in contact with who want a co-responder, um, so that we can utilize these funds for that.
And then, um, what is the uh, the, the timeline, how, how fast, um, how soon um, will the, the start, the co-responders?
Um, as soon as we have contracts finalized, um, we're able to post for the position, and that, that can take a varying amount of time, depending on how many applicants we get, um, there is a interview process where we do a phone screen, an initial um, interview, and then final interviews with the chiefs of police in those communities, um, and then before the co-responder is able to respond on their own with the law enforcement, we have um, a seven to eight week onboarding period, which provides um, a lot of time and, and training for the co-responder, not just required trains through OCHN, and required safety trainings with law enforcement, but that includes 80 hours of ride-along, both with law enforcement and other co-responders.
Thank you.
Any other Board members with questions? Okay, I had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I do have a question now, Trish, um, are the, are these co-respondent physicians pretty sought after by job applicants?
The job description is a licensed clinician, um, so we know sometimes that it can be hard, there's a lot of um, job openings, and not as many licensed clinicians as we would like, um, but it's also about finding the right individual um, to work with law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, other Board members? Seeing none, I have a question for you, um, this is an ARPA contract, which is essentially a grant.
Yes.
Um, are we thinking, well, since we're gonna try to hire, and it would not be good for them to hire for a year or less, especially since we're coming into January already, so it would be essentially a, an eight-month kind of seven-month period, um, potentially, are we looking to add or bake an extra million dollars into our budget for future years um, to continue to grow this space?
Uh, receiving this pilot funding is that the departments have a sustainability plan, um, so that would mean that they would work to build it into their budget, the way our other co-responders are funded, um, so for example, our Troy co-responder is built into that Troy city budget, but it is an OCHN employee, and so we would work to sustain them uh, through local funding.
Okay, so we're not, so we actually are looking to hire these folks, not contract hire them?
Not contract, no, we would be hiring them.
Okay, alright, thank you, uh, at this point, um, uh, we have a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion, um, all those in favor of supporting this uh, ARPA fund for CIT, um, for co-responder program, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a financial update with our CFO and our, Patrick, I don't remember what your title is, your new title? Deputy CFO, okay, so, okay.
I apologize, this is Cheryl, I apologize for not being there, I'm a little under the weather today.
It's okay, I can see you in the picture, okay? And thank you for being here, Patrick.
Okay, so we, we don't have a, a financial report to go over the financials, and part of the reason being is that the September books are still open, um, they're not fully closed, they're incomplete at this time, and so, um, there are also some claims and encounter data are still being reconciled for year-end, and so, um, typically it's missing data for re- retroactive um, eligibility payments and things of that nature, and so, um, the, the revenue and the expenses would be understated, and it wouldn't be a true reflection of where we are, and so we, we're gonna present our financials in uh, January, for the month of October and November.
And before you step further, that was a discussion we had uh, with our Chair, and um, let's see, our, let's see, myself as, as Treasurer and our, uh, and my uh, Vice Chair, and so we reached this agreement to discuss revenue drivers and other things while we, because we know that our, our cost drivers are not, you know, they're not final yet.
And also, we did have a, we completed our upgrade to our Tangi Cloud system this past weekend, and some software issues that we were working through, we got to complete it, so, um, it would have, there's a lot of things going on interchangeably that would have, so, thank you for giving us the break on this presentation tonight, because there wouldn't have been um, a true reflection of where we stood, so, um, that being said, I think there was an update on eligible, eligibles, um, it looks like our trend is going down, we did show a downward trend in our eligibles, uh, for the month of um, October, um, we were down, we were at 102,000 in October for Tanneth, we went down to 98,000 in November, for that same category, uh, we did show an increase in the DAB population from October to this, to um, November, um, it went from 43,513 in October to 45,522 in November, but compared to September, um, that number was consistent, so it was at 45 in September, we saw a dip in October to 43, and we showing it back at 45 in November. And the healthy Michigan went down, um, it went down um, by about 4,000 from October to November, from 82,000 to 78,000. So, we are seeing a decline in our number of eligibles throughout all populations, except the, except the DABS, which remain constant.
Questions?
Yes. So, um, I would ask that, since you'll have the ability to close out the books for year-end, and by the time we meet in January, we will have been through a quarter of our fiscal year, if you s, you know, I'd ask for a report in addition to the regular report, but do we need a, some kind of budget adjustment, are we seeing the trends pretty consistent, that we know there's gonna be less revenue? This is the thing we talked about last year, that we, we knew was coming, and I would just had a short conversation with uh, our lobbyist, um, and, you know, with redetermination, I mean, there's no question, if not when, not if, but when, and do we feel we've got strong enough data to make a prediction for the remainder of the year, because if we have a, an, an ability to make an adjustment now, it has a nine-month impact instead of, you know, an eight-month or a seven-month impact, so that's my, um, and my recollection is we've had kind of those first quarter budget adjustments in the past, once peo-, once the finance division has been able to kind of take a look at things, so I'd ask you, and Cheryl's on the line too, to evaluate that and, and tell us what we needed to make a recommendation, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, uh, any other questions? Yeah, John?
Thank you, um, could, did I hear you right, that the DAB number went up for us?
It did, yes.
Okay, so kind of jumping off Dennis's, are, are people being better classified? And you may not be able to answer that, but I think between you, Cheryl, Noss, or others, you know, that this has been my tangent for the last several months, you know, filling out those forms and the paper, it, it's kind of pure nonsense to the consumer, or the guardians, or people that do it, you know, it's been four years for a lot of folks, so I'm just curious if we could follow up on that, and maybe people are now better classified by some act of God, but that's, to me, that's interesting, that that one is actually a little bit-
But that's a return to South, to September's numbers, roughly, it just dropped during October.
They dropped in October, then they came back up to the September numbers.
Yeah.
Alright, but, alright, thank you.
Yeah, Dana?
I just wanna comment that there is a statewide trend, and when we meet as a group of PHP CEOs, we discussed, some of the regions are really struggling, because one of the regions, LRE, which historically has struggled financially, um, they have a 78% drop in their eligibles, so they are advocating, we're all advocating as a group with the state, but the state is saying, similar to what Patrick is saying, and what you're saying, Jonathan, is that it's almost too soon to detect a trend, but, you know, those of us around the table know we, we have to do it month to month, even if it's too soon, we have to follow that, and we have to continue to advocate for those individuals that we know are um, most severe, high-cost, high-need to remain DAB, so whatever we need to do to advocate and educate the families and the community about making sure that happens, there was supposed to be some form of automatic renewal for redetermination, and I don't think that's happening consistently across the state the way it should, so we're watching it very closely to make sure in this region, that um, we're looking at those individuals who are in residential settings, who are really the higher-cost, high-need individuals, to make sure that we have them in the right category to support the, the funding for the service levels that they need, so I think that's something that we have to continue to be vocal on, even though we're not hearing a lot of feedback from the state yet.
Thank you, um, Malkaya?
Right, that's you, I, you're all the way down there, tired to see you, there we go.
Thank you, I just wanted clarification about the DAB population, isn't that the one that, that has more money per person?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Disabled, age, and blind, the other one is temporary assistance to needy families, to Tanneth, you're welcome.
Other Board members with questions or comments? Alright, thank you, Patrick, thank you Carolyn, we look forward to, or Cheryl, sorry, look forward to seeing the numbers next month, and the trends. I think that's it for uh, Finance Committee, I'm gonna turn the table back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Landsman.
Ms. Woodruff, um, I did take attendance for the Board members that have added since roll call, and you now have a quorum on policy.
Thank you, um, next up would be Wendy Schiller and Lindsay McCracken. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, my name is Wendy Schiller, I'm the manager of Quality Improvement, and I'm here today with Lindsay McCracken, she's a quality analyst on our team, and today we're gonna be discussing the Fiscal Year 23 Member Experience Report, which is developed using the results of the Experience of Care and Health Outcome Survey, the ECHO. So, this was the first year that we partnered with a NCQA certified survey vendor to complete the survey, so you might remember we gave a presentation after we completed the RFP process to talk about our new vendor, and we now partner with the Center for the Study of Services, so they've been working for many years with different health plans and healthcare agencies, as well as state and federal agencies to conduct surveys, so we had a very good experience with them, I think, this year for our first year, and they've been working on, you know, surveying with the ECHO since 2003, so they have a lot of experience, so. So, the ECHO, we use this for multiple purposes, the primary purpose is of course to improve the quality of services for people that we serve, we also can use it to evaluate and monitor the agencies that we work with, and it also provide, it holds providers accountable because we do post these results publicly. So, our survey sample is selected from a list of individuals who've been receiving services for 12 consecutive months or more, and we survey all the populations that you see listed on this slide, it's everyone we serve, and in Fiscal Year 23, we had 574 completed surveys. So, just for a brief overview of the ECHO, there are four key domains that we focus our evaluation on, the survey questions are all categorized into these four domains, and they all align with the CAPS measures, and that CAPS is the acronym, stands for Consumer Assessment of Healthcare Providers and Systems, so all of these measures are recognized by both CMS and NCQA, so you can see the four domains there, uh, we evaluate services, how a person's experience is with the scope of services that we provide, the access, their experience with how easily they can obtain the services, availability, measuring their experience with the presence or absence of the different types of service and convenient locations for the person, and acceptability, the experience with the fit of the practitioner, if they had special needs like cultural, communication, or linguistic needs. So, we have a demographics page here, for the sake of time, I don't have to review all of it, but um, we are happy to see that our percentages of respondents um, equate very well to the percentage of the people that we serve, so it's a very representative sample, it seems to be almost exact to the breakdown by race and sex, um, of who we serve. So, Lindsay's been responsible for compiling the report, and she's gonna provide more detail on the results, as well as some, uh, the impact the intervention's made from the previous year.
Thanks, Wendy. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, so, I'm gonna, as Wendy said, I'm gonna go through the various questions that fall under those four domains that were mentioned earlier, and also for the sake of time, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about each of the questions, but um, what you'll see in the next four slides is the breakdown of the questions, and then you'll also see the numerator, the denominator, the rate that we scored, what our goal was, and whether or not we met that goal, and for those who have a color copy, or who can see it, if it, if there's purple on that column, there's, the goal was not met, and green means that the goal was met. So, for the service areas, um, this is again related to the satisfaction received from supports, counseling, and services, only two out of the five of these questions did reach the 90% goal, I do wanna note, what you'll notice is varying goals over the next few slides, initially, we had started out as a baseline at 70% for each of these questions, per NCQA guidelines, once we meet the 70% goal for two subsequent years, we are to increase that goal, so historically, we had been trending high, which is why these specific questions were increased to 90%. So, questions 11, 12, and 14 are questions in which we did not meet that 90% goal, so these are areas in which we are actively meeting with the clinical team, as well as attending various meetings within the network to discuss interventions and barriers to why these goals were not met, and what we can do during the fiscal year to try to improve these scores for Fiscal Year 24's ECHO survey. The next is looking at accessibility, so this includes receiving timely intake appointments, how quickly individuals served receive answers they need via telephone, and how long individuals must wait for appointments, only one of these questions met the goal of 85%, questions three and five had not had an increased target, their goal was still at 70%, question number seven had an increased goal of 80%, but it did fall slightly below, and again, these are areas that we are working to develop um, pretty robust interventions, so that we can try and improve these scores for this year. Next is looking at availability, this is assessing member experience with the presence or absence of the appropriate types of practitioners, providers, and services and convenient locations. Unfortunately, none of these questions met their goal. Question number nineteen had a goal of seventy percent. Questions twenty and twenty-one had a goal of seventy-five percent and question twenty-two had a goal of eighty-five percent. And again, these are areas that will be addressed during the fiscal year. The final area or subgroup is acceptability. Um, this is assessing members' experience with the fit of behavioral healthcare practitioner, offering care and with the programs and services. One of these areas met, that would be question number twenty-six, which we typically do fairly well on, that had an increased goal of ninety percent. Questions twenty-eight and twenty-nine did not meet the goal of seventy-five percent. So the next few slides are going, it's kind of a follow-up from last year. You might remember last year I was here presenting the same thing. So I'm going to go through the questions, what the identified barrier was and the intervention. So many of these, the barrier was staffing shortages and staff turnover. We know that that is heavily impacting the service delivery that is happening within our network. So one of the major areas that was focused on was increased staff and practitioner recruitment. For question number fourteen, the barrier, um, or one of the interventions was looking at internal auditing functions to see what can be done from a process standpoint and looking at clinical documentation to see how regularly individuals are responding to those questions when it comes to those services. And then question twenty-eight and twenty-nine, one of the barriers was a lack of communication within the treatment team that had been identified. So the intervention was looking at strategies to increase communication across treatment teams. And then there were too many to fit on that one slide, so I broke it up for you a little bit, so it wasn't super teeny tiny. But question nineteen, this is the same as the slides before. Uh, the barrier was a lack of consistency in providing opportunities for family inclusion annually and regularly. So the intervention was to review the annual IPOS documentation and provider reporting requirements, as well as to look at possible data review processes. So this is the same information, however, I wanted to show what the Fiscal Year Twenty Two rate was in comparison to the Fiscal Year Twenty Three rate. Unfortunately, only one of those questions showed improvement and it was very slight. So question number five had increased from sixty-two point oh nine percent to sixty-two point three two percent. The other questions are all areas that also did not meet their goal for the year, so they are all being worked on again with more robust interventions for the fiscal year. That's it for the review of the question. Are there any questions or feedback?
Dr. Hans?
Uh, I have a couple, three questions. So, uh, this is a very good presentation, thank you for that and it makes a lot of things very clear. What percentages, uh, of the population does your samples represent?
So surveys were mailed out to just under ten percent of everyone served. So I think that year we had about over twenty-seven thousand people served and they sent out two thousand seven hundred and fifty surveys.
Okay. And, uh, in the future, do you expect the sample to be increased or what is the plan for that?
Yes, we do hope to do that. That was, uh, one of the main reasons that we wanted to go with this vendor. They do have capacity to expand it as much as we are willing to and want to invest in that. So currently, our next two years of our contract are at the same amount as we had this year, but, um, if we wanna look at increasing that budget, we would have to talk about that with administration and see if that's a priority and then we could-
Right.
-we would be able to do that.
Uh, is the sampling random or how do you select the sample?
Yes, that was actually something that the vendor did themselves. They have a sampling technique, uh, that they follow, but we send a list of everyone that qualifies for that twelve consecutive months of services. We send a complete list of all the claims and then they sample it for us.
Okay, so it's across the board or in different sections of the population do you sample?
The sample we send is a-
Because it would be skewed if you take only one, one population and exclude the other, or if they are not fairly represented, let's say, a percentage wise in each of the best populations.
So we send a complete list of everyone that qualifies. They, the way they broke it up, they took two thousand adults and seven hundred and fifty children. That's how it was written in the contract, the survey samples.
Regardless of what category they are.
Yes.
Okay. So my last question is, pertains to the, especially people with disabilities and, uh, intellectual and cognitive, uh, challenges. What kind of support do they have in completing these surveys?
They have a customer service department at CSS where they provide phone numbers and contact information for individuals to call them for any sort of assistance they may need in completing the survey. So that kind of has taken OCHN out of the loop for that type of assistance. So they have a complete, they actually contract with another third-party vendor that handles all of that customer service work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think hers first and then my, she, she, I think Malkaya?
Ms. Newman?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your report and your explanation, very well done. Um, on question number five, uh, when it, when you talked about the staff shortage and staff turnover, um, because this is a national problem, um, had you considered some other interventions other than increased recruitment? Cause if the bodies aren't there, you can't recruit them.
Sorry, my mic didn't wanna turn on. Um, one of the areas that we've been talking about, not necessarily with increasing recruitment, but of looking at barriers to hiring. So there are policies and practices that may be stringent that the clinical team discussed with us, that they're looking at reviewing with some of the providers to discuss what are potential barriers in your hiring practices or delays or things that are causing maybe some of the issues in getting someone onboarded quicker. Not just looking at recruitment and turnover, but also looking at hiring barriers.
I have one more question. Um, on question nineteen, we talked about lack of consistency, uh, for family inclusion. Um, were the numbers different from provider to provider? Or did they break it out that way?
So we do have, I, that is something I could report back on. We do have to aggregate the individual provider reports, but that is something that is already aggregated. I just don't have it available with me at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Pastor Jones?
Thank you very much and, and thank you, but this is an exciting report. It's something, uh, so I thank you all. The question I'm gonna ask you, in the slicing and dicing of the information, three areas, ethnicity, cultural, um, and, uh, economics. Were they considered? And the reason I'm asking that question, the American Association of Medical Colleges is really trying to study this, this area and, and it deals with trustworthiness. And I know, over these last few weeks on CNN, NBC, ABC, whoever, whoever, everybody's talking about the idea that, um, uh, certain groups, okay, ethnic groups are not seeking a proper medical attention and, and what have you. And part of that is, is this high level of trust. And when I look at your report and, uh, it lists the number of people who decided not to answer, okay, that's, that's A, uh, uh, they, the consistency of information, okay? All of those fall right in line with this, uh, lack of trust. And I'm wondering, in this survey, or maybe future surveys, and you may have considered it in this survey, uh, but have you looked at those three areas? Ethnicity, the culture and the, uh, economics, economic and the poverty level of, and especially in this group that we're dealing with, um, you know, the substance abuse and what the mental illness and what have you.
That's, that's a really great question and I'm actually really excited about, I'm kind of a, like a data geek, it's really exciting to me. But this year with, working with, um, a different vendor, they have more, a more robust analysis that they were able to provide us. So each of the questions has a breakdown, um, not only by the aggregate response, but by demographic categories as well. So something I'm really looking forward to is being able to dig into each of these questions and look at the varying responses by demographic populations.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple-
I guess I'll conclude by saying I, I can't wait to see the results, okay?
Mr. Torres?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to note that, I mean, I'm looking at this and it's, it's discouraging because, um, according to this, the goal is not being met in twelve of sixteen of the categories. Wanted to make that note.
Yeah, it was unfortunate to see that the results dipped. We haven't had that many questions score below the goal, especially with those areas where you seen they had an increased target before.
So, and, and I see that, you know, there's interventions, how, how deep do we go, um, to implement those interventions? Like, uh, Board Member Newman mentioned, you know, if there's not staff to hire, then how, how does that fix anything? So I'm just concerned because there's so many, we're not meeting goal in twelve and sixteen of the categories. And if we have interventions, but how deep or how realistic are those interventions that we're putting forth?
Right. So we are looking at more, instead of, we had said a lot that we were focusing on recruitment and retention and staff turnover, but this year we're really looking at policies and procedures and IPOS clinical protocols, IPOS protocols, auditing processes. We are also, we met with the Integrated Healthcare Meeting last week to get some ideas from the clinical directors and the nurse case managers. We are also planning to attend some of the clinical director meetings to get ideas and see what we can do to help within the network to see what our provider feedback is.
Now, we-
Oh, we, sorry, we are also attending. I will be presenting these results to the CEEC and CAC for their feedback.
And then, um, we, this is annually, correct?
Yes.
So is there a way or is there availability or is it an option to, to check our data quarterly to see? Cause it seems like if we're failing in so many areas in twelve of sixteen categories that we could put forth interventions, but we have to wait a year to know if they're working.
Wendy might have an additional response, but some of the areas, especially around accessibility and availability, we have other metrics and standards such as the state performance indicators where we're able to track on a quarterly basis how quickly individuals are able to be getting in the door and be seen and how quickly their follow-up appointments are happening.
Yes, I mean, that was a great response. The survey itself is only administered once a year, but yeah, there are some things that we can track on a more regular basis that are related. And we know that our performance indicator related to access is not performing where we'd like it to be as well. So that does align with what we're seeing in the surveys too. So we have a number of interventions that we're doing, working on that access measure as well, as well as all our providers have written performance improvement plans and just really trying to target that because that's a big one where we're kinda falling behind on.
Yeah, um, just speaking as one, uh, board member's, uh, on the Policy Committee, um, I would like to see something sooner than later, just, uh, uh, information, just, it's the idea of, you know, it's good that you know where you're at, right? You get the measurement, but then the progress, how, how do you know you're making the progress, right? And so if we're putting forth interventions, it would be good to know maybe quarterly if those interventions are working or if they're not, then we can figure out, okay, what other interventions could we do, could we use? Um, I just, uh, considering that, that it is so many categories that we're falling short in, uh, it would be good to be more proactive, uh, on it, um, you know, at least on a quarterly basis so we could see if there's progress being made and, um, hopefully, you know, so, and, and if we are, what those interventions are and if they're working or if they're not working, move the other way.
Mr. Landman, did you have your question?
I, I do still have a question, but I'm waiting to see what our team compliance officer's gonna say.
Um, I, I also work with quality team. Um, to the extent that we are, that we have, um, the outcomes that we have found in this survey, there are, there are some confounding variables which have impacted the outcome. And so the things that we can change and what we've been talking about and suggesting are things that we can change, that are within our control and within our purview. Um, and for the most part, we won't be able to see how they ripple through the entire system, um, until they actually have a chance to. However, those things that are KPIs that we measure on a quarterly basis and report to the state, we will be able to get that information to you. Um, where, as it relates to, um, as it relates to, um, hiring and staff consistency, that is actually, um, a confounding variable which would impact every answer in the survey, but is not something within our control. And we actually don't have an ability to control for it. Um, so if you were to look at the answers, even though a number of the answers are lower, um, they are not lower by a standard deviation. There's some statistical variability in them that is not great, but we understand that the, the population of individuals providing service has changed substantially over the course of the last year. Um, and that is a big, that makes a big difference in how people view their services, their access, things that sort. So, um, we are, we do understand that that is a problem that we can't necessarily fix. However, what they are actually thinking about and what they're talking about are the things that we can change, the things that we can change that are very personal. Um, for example, in addressing, um, content in the IPOS or the way the, the, the person-centered process works. Those are things that really will impact how an individual sees or feels about their treatment and their treatment experience. So that, that's really what we're, we're looking at, um, and what the team is looking at.
Can, can I yield to Dr. Hans first?
Sure. Yeah, I, I am encouraged by this, this data, even though it doesn't look very good
on paper, but it tells us all the opportunities we have for improvement and as a clinician, as a provider of healthcare services, I take it positively. It tells me exactly what I need to work on, how and on, now that is up to the leadership. Unfortunately, we have enough good talent here. Um, I have heard from like outside observers that, especially this board, they were, that this is a diverse board and we all, uh, contribute something as to how to look at things differently. So I don't take it, of course, I like to see the numbers better. Um, you know, my children still say, if I got an A minus, you always said why not an A plus? So there is always room for improvement, but I'm encouraged that at least we have a starting point. Now, John Paul's point to that we should be given periodic assessment of how, what we are working on, where our focus is currently, because things change, the needs change. Uh, and with all the budgetary things and uncertainties that we always have, this is nothing new, as Jonathan and Malkaya will say, we have faced these kind of budgetary challenges in the past. There is always something that's not, not encouraging, but this gives us opportunity to see where we can improve and what our focus should be. So, thank you. And, uh, obviously you have a lot of work to do. Now, the other point is the sample size is so small that we can't really make any generalizations. So.
Thank you. So I had one, one question, um, cause my focus tends to be on access, access and availability. And so Wendy and Lindsay, thank you, cause I know you are a data geek. Both are, both of you are, sort of, but, um, so I keep looking at ways that, at least on the payer side and as well on the board here, how we're addressing both, both of those issues. And how are we, how are we trying to improve our data, our telehealth programs? Because that's the fastest way we can launch. I know we need to improve our transportation ones and know that Adam's got a whole program that he's been working on and it's gonna take a while because it's- I know that Adam's got a whole program that he's been working on and it's going to take a while because it's, it's new money and it's new challenge. But how, but until we can get, you know, more organizations to provide transportation, the fastest way we can deploy services to folks is through telehealth. How are we trying to grow telehealth services for a variety of programs that currently exist so that more people can benefit?
This was actually one of the areas of intervention that, uh, we talked about. So, uh, with the emergency order being lifted, there was new guidelines and new services and changes in which services could be delivered through telemedicine. And through the communication from the state, some of it was not super clear. So, one thing that has been worked on and will be finalized during the year is which services can be delivered through telemedicine and making sure that those are being offered.
And we'll be able to offer those before the end of this fiscal year?
Yeah, they're, they've been finalized, yep.
So, we have the providers who are the vendors and the partners that can do that actively, once we get, we get greenlighted?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other side, I guess, is really not a question for you, but it's what more are we doing on the transportation side, Adam? You know, how does, what their numbers do, helping you drive more reason to, to make those changes?
Yeah, we'll have to get back to that.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to, um, to your first question and, um, the consideration for telehealth, perhaps one of the, the better examples of that was that the initial determination that, um, peers and SUD could not provide telehealth-related services. Um, that was a period of time which was impactful for individuals who are going through, um, the SUD program. Uh, peers are a very valuable component. And so, ultimately, when you see a, an outcome from individuals who are receiving services, that is impactful because it immediately changes the way that they can access their services and how they view accessibility. Um, and so, um, we, there was a change in that very recently. Um, that change has been made clear. They are now able to do that. And that will, of course, change the way this answer will look in the future. Um, I wanted to also, um, refer back to Pastor's question regarding, uh, the data. Uh, my, my recollection is that the data actually is, um, the number of ten percent, um, is likely more than statistically valid. Um, my understanding is that the selection does go across the relevant, um, the relevant service lines and that those relevant service lines are represented by a number that is statistically significant. Um, so, we, we are measuring, um, not just a population, but across the population of individuals that we serve. So, I, I don't want that to-
And, and then the question, uh, on, on that really deals with what, um, how comfortable a person feels in giving you real information, uh, what have you? Whether they're going to an appointment, what have you, already with some sense that they're not going to hear me right, treat me right, or what have you, okay? So, all of that, uh, and it doesn't matter whether, you know, whether it's mental or whether it's drugs, what have you, that across the board, across the board. And both ethnicity, okay, the cultures and the poverty levels, economic level, people have that concern, uh, that, it's, it's a big thing. I think the report good, you know, I'm, I'm excited about this and, and what you're doing. I agree with Dr. Han, you know, it's good that we're measuring, okay? Uh, it may be that we have to do another slice and dice to get some other information, uh, that's needed, as you know, as, as Mr. Torres is asking, uh, you know, you to do. But, um, that is a big concern, a big concern, trustworthiness, trustworthiness of not only the person that's administering that, okay, that, that treatment or what have you, okay, but even staff, so.
Any additional questions? Ms. Newman?
(laugh) I'm sorry. Um, the answer is yes. A couple of things we've done internally is we added a policy stat software so that we make sure that we're regularly reviewing our, uh, policies and procedures and making sure they're up to date and getting rid of outdated process. We also, um, when Nasser joined our team, had him to go over to different areas to look at how those teams were working. So, internally, looking at redundancies or things that we could make better by utilizing our system. We also work with our partners in terms of how we collect data from them. And we talked about the financial status reports that we get and how, um, we periodically review that information. But we also have dashboards and things of that nature where we'll be able to better tie those things in. As Pedro spoke to earlier, our financial software, um, and the process of implementing that. On a larger scale, um, working with the state, there is activity around finding those things that are, uh, not necessary and cause a lot of strain and then also cause people to not be happy and not do their job well because there's so many requirements. So, that's a conversation, I'll tell you, for the last three years has come up over and over and over. And sometimes I sit back and listen, I'm like, these are similar to the, and I'm, I can relate to what Mr. Torres is saying. These are the same interventions we talked about before. And I think they're on a higher general level where we need, you all, it sounds like you all want to have more of the detail about what it is that we're doing to move the needle. So, I'll tell you, um, one thing that we've done is advocate for social workers. Right now, they have to take this very stringent test. The success rate in passing that test and being able to hire a licensed social worker is very low and very poor. And then they have to retake the test, which is very expensive for somebody who needs a job and right out of school. So, those are the kind of things that we have advocated for and it looks like that is going to change. I'm not quite sure when, but that is something that's actively being looked at to modify those testing requirements so that we can hire more social workers. So, one of the things is it's a number of people you have to do the work, but also the quality of work. So, you can have enough people to work, but if they're not trained and ready to care for individuals and address some of the things that you see in the survey, um, you're still going to have the same outcome. So, you need the people, but you also need people to be trained to do the quality of work and be culturally sensitive and things of that nature so that you can build trust. So, those clinical skills, you know, I laugh as an older clinician, um, that I thought I received twenty years ago. Sometimes you see this, uh, younger, um, or newer set of clinicians that don't have the advantage of getting the training and support that because of the workforce issue, they don't have that, um, field work experience that they need to do the job. And it shows in some of these outcomes. So, looking at those kind of things as well.
I hate to debate that, but wouldn't you want them to be better skilled, better experienced and pass the test? Instead of being someone who's going to fail the test?
Well, uh, the test, the way the test is developed, from my understanding, I'm a psychologist, so I don't understand. I do not have to take the social work test, but from what I hear, is the ta- test is extremely challenging. And I see you shaking your head, so I'm not sure if you've taken that test or not. But it, it's almost, the failure rate is so high that there's a flaw in the test. So, why would you have so many people who've spent four years in school plus another two additional years in school? And your success rate is so low.
I, I just want to piggyback on that. Um, I did attend last week, um, the regional meeting and, uh, this came up in that legislative discussion. Uh, and, um, to your point, I, I, I do, you know, I get that, that we want to have qualified. But I think what they're noticing and the state legislator is noticing is that, um, there is a flaw, um, that there, there is, uh, something that is, uh, the, the bar is, is, is so high that it's making it unrealistic for us to be able to solve a problem, to have licensed social workers. Um, and there is an immense amount of hours that are required in order to become a licensed social worker. So, you have a lot of on-the-job training, um, all those kinds of things. And then it boils down to this exam that, uh, many people are having hard times, uh, you know, maybe not passing on, on the first try. Um, but, uh, I think, you know, the states, I don't think it's their, their, their point to lower the standard like way low, but to make it more realistic so that we can solve this problem that we have with having these licensed social workers. Um, because there definitely is, um, you know, my wife's a licensed social worker. She's gone through the whole process and I've seen it firsthand. And just working in the field of criminal justice, you see it as well with so many, you know, MSWs in the system. Uh, but, uh, I think there's, there's just some kind of middle ground that has to be met. And so, with that legislation, if it goes through, I, I know it, it seems pretty, a pretty reasonable fix, uh, to this issue. Thank you.
Right, and I, I, I agree that, uh, there's something wrong with it, okay, in relation to that. Uh, in addition to the cost, the timeline, and then all of a sudden trying to go back through. So, whether it's, whether it's a social worker, whether it's their master's degree, whether it's they, even psych, psychologist, psychiatrists, uh, going through the same issues. There has to be a change. And, and maybe the fact that, uh, there's such a greater focus on mental illness now, okay? That this is a great opportunity for us to reevaluate, not on the length of time, but also, uh, the, and obviously, online experience, onsite experience that people have, uh, you know, for that. Uh, so, um, we need to reevaluate. I, I too attended that meeting and I'm, I'm excited about them relooking and reevaluating the educational requirements. Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions. Uh, question fourteen, in terms of how it's worded. Uh, how often do the people you went to for services and support spend enough time with you? Enough needs to be defined because enough to me may be one hour and may be three hours for the next person. So, I don't know if that was, um, you know, more descriptive in the actual survey because enough means something different to each of us sitting at the table. Uh, the other thing, um, when you look at the barriers from funding year twenty-two to twenty-three, yes, we made the grade in one area out of five. But we also know that a lot of boomers left the workforce in twenty-two. Um, and whether or not training is an issue with the staff that is being hired, the staff that is available, you would really want to look at the tenure of year twenty-two versus twenty-three because, um, you're not going to have the same level if all of your experienced staff is leaving and you have newer, uh, staff coming in. So, you really want to pull back some of those layers on the onion to look to see if you're actually comparing apples to apples or if you're comparing apples to oranges.
That's an excellent observation. Um, and it, it is one that does go to the nature of the, um, the newer social, social workers, um, the Gen Z team versus, um, the more mature, more experienced team. Um, and, you know, we, we do have, um, not just anecdotal data, but, um, but real data about, um, the way Gen Z tends to approach things and communicate, um, is very different from the way other generations do. Um, so, there is some, some, um, some medium that has to be met um, between, um, a more senior generations, uh, receiving services from newer people and the fact that newer people take these jobs. They take these jobs as case managers. And one of the things that, um, to go back to Ms. Newman's question about, um, paperwork itself. Um, so, uh, much to my dismay, I will take responsibility for the need for the paperwork because, um, that, that paperwork that we have is the way that we determine that's, no, not just the money, but it's the way that we determine that the services are actually being delivered, uh, and that they are suitable for the individual's condition and that they were delivered by an appropriately qualified individual. And so, the, the three, the four things that have to be on that, um, on that paperwork, um, with respect to every service, lets us know that when that person signs it at the bottom, which is the last one, that, that service is appropriately delivered. Um, and that is the most important thing. And so, for that, we, we, we have a real challenge in reducing the amount of paperwork. Um, now, for a lot of the, um, for a lot of the individuals who are case managers, um, I, we, we have heard and we've heard from, uh, in a number of different forums, that their caseloads are very large. And therefore, as a result of large caseloads, there does seem to be except, an exceptional amount of paperwork. Um, and that is, um, that is a part of generally medical practice right now. Um, so, um, we, I, we can't necessarily come up with a fix for that. Um, but we can, we can, by adequately addressing the bar, have more people flow in to reduce those rates, to reduce the, the caseload rates.
Yeah, because when you look at substance use, medication-assisted treatment versus mental health. Mental health has updates every ninety days. Medication-assisted treatment has updates every sixty days. So, it stands to reason that substance use disorders caseloads are smaller.
Right.
Because they have a lot more paperwork to complete and oftentimes, providers don't see that difference. Are there any additional questions? If not, we thank you for your thorough report. Our CEO, Ms. Dana Lansky?
Good evening again. I just wanted to bring to your attention, on page twenty-one, I think of your packet, is the Chief Executive Officer and Executive Director's Secession Plan Recommendations for this year. Um, periodically, at least annually, I need to make updates. And because we've had some staffing changes, I wanted to make sure that it aligned with those changes that were made. And so, if you can review that, actually review and file, I'm not sure about the approval process, if that's actually needed or if you just need this documentation. Because ultimately, it would be up to this board if I became unavailable or we're no longer with the organization on what the leadership transition plan would look like or succession plan. But these are the recommendations I have in place and you'll see the changes in the names and the positions because of those changes that we've had over the last year. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns. Happy to answer or respond to those. Ultimately, everything's going to go to Adam.
Um, well, first, thanks for putting this together. Uh, we hope we never have to put it into effect.
I do too.
But it makes sense, the way you've divided up the CEO role, if that happens, um, so that one person doesn't have the full burden. And, and of course, this is all temporary.
Yes.
Until someone is found to, uh, assume those positions full-time. So, I'm, I'm satisfied with it. I, I'm not aware of any requirement that we have to vote on it. I think this is, uh, I don't, I don't remember doing that before, so.
I think it's a file-
It has to be on file.
Yeah, it just will be a file.
Okay, okay. All right, so, I'm fine. All right, so, I'm fine.
Was that actually in the committee of the whole agenda? Because I didn't see an attachment for it.
Yeah, it's in your packet. Did you need a copy, Mr. Lansky?
I would like one, because, yeah, I didn't see that as an attachment under the actual agenda with all the other PDFs.
I'll make sure you all get a copy.
We'll just pin it before you leave.
The next item I have is actually the resolution from Oakland Community Health Network as a participant in the Michigan Consortium of Healthcare Executives. The resolution is also on page twenty-two, so I'm thinking maybe that's not in your packet, but.
No, it should be. You have it?
There was an attachment for that.
Okay, great. Great. So I won't read through the entire thing, but what it is a result of, when the coordinating agencies who manage the Substance Use Disorder Services were merged with the PIPs and CMHSPs, they started an organization, a nonprofit called the Michigan, where is it? I just saw it. Well, now, it's, the name is the Michigan Consortium of Healthcare Executives as of October fifth, 2016. So I'll read the last three areas, and what it does, it just talks about our involvement with MEACHY, we have a board, we have bylaws, we have dues, and everything that we participate in to ensure that as a group of PIPs, that we are advocating and protecting the system and our role in the system, but also making sure that services and outcomes are appropriate. I think some of you may know, maybe not others that are newer to the board, we serve in our contract as a community mental health specialty program, service program, a CMHSP, as well as a PIHP, which is a prepaid inpatient health plan. So essentially, the PIHP part of our contract is the larger portion and more of the managed care administrative portion of our contracted work. The CMHSP is the portion that manages or provides the services or ensures those essential services are provided through a network. So in working with this group, we actually look at things from the PIHP perspective, and this resolution, which is dated long before I got here, actually gives me, the CEO of Oakland Community Health Network is hereby authorized to serve as OCHN's representative and a director of the MCH board, and the later being subject to approval of the members of MEACHY in accordance with its bylaws, and further resolve that the CEO of Oakland Community Health Network is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all instruments, certificates, agreements, and other documents necessary for OCHN to hold a membership with interest in MEACHY. Furthermore, our further resolve that the OCHN board will evaluate on an annual basis whether OCHN will continue to hold a membership, interest in MEACHY, or withdraw from such membership. So this resolution was adopted and signed August twenty-first, 2018, and part of our job is to make sure that we bring it to your attention every year, annually, and you have an opportunity to say, continue to participate or withdraw our participation.
Any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
So is that something that we would do as part of the finance side, to approve it?
You know what?
For a recommendation?
It's not under finance portion of the agenda, it's under policy.
I know, but it's dollars for the program, right?
I could have put it under other business.
I mean, you're, what we're looking for is either we do it now, or we wait till the board meeting to approve it then.
I don't, I don't know if it's seeking approval, it's just on there, on the resolution to review it every year.
Okay, it's just the resolution, not the funding for it?
Right, correct.
Okay.
The funding comes up as a different contract every year, if it's needed, if it meets the threshold.
And it doesn't.
If there are no questions, thank you. Moving on to other business, Ms. Barrett.
So under the agenda, board agenda planning process, we go through this every December, what you have in front of you and in your board packet is for calendar year 2024. If you guys can review that, I'm not going to go over each month, but if you can review that and provide any feedback, everything highlighted in blue is contract requirement with either the PIP or CMHSP for your reviewer approval. So those are required. I sent this to our leadership staff, directors, managers, chiefs, to see the timelines, to make sure that those are meeting the timelines for state reporting or contract reporting. So those are slotted in the months to meet those guidelines. So other than that, if you guys can review, and then, as you know, every month, if you ask for a certain topic, or we hear certain things throughout the meeting, I'll add them to an agenda or to a study session as we move forward, and then we approve agendas going by monthly basis after that. But this is just a yearly outline to give us, to give our staff some prep time, basically.
If I could, I asked Sheila to get this out, so we give some inspiration to review the full year, and if there's things that the board would like to cover, or a new topic, please let me know, or get an email to Sheila or I, and we'll see what we can do about putting it on for discussion, particularly the study session. I'm not so much worried about the regular, you know, the co-meeting, the board session kind of take care of themselves because of the contracts and other reports that we have to handle, but if there's topics that you wish to study, or deserve a little bit more information that we don't have time for at a board meeting, let us know, okay?
Does anybody have any questions on what I did provide? Ms. Newman?
The copy that I have is in black and white, so I can't see.
I can give you my copy.
Okay. Well, I don't know if I'm the only one, thank you.
In Boardable, it should be colored. We just probably printed you a black and white, you know, same color copy.
Well, I take it the lighter print means blue.
Yeah. But those, those ones are... And then I paid attention to historical presentations, when we typically, historically have had your review, or to meet, kind of like the audit, the budget, or the audit keeps falling like in July, so I kind of paid attention to like the last three years, when something typically was ready and available for your guys' review, to keep it kind of consistent. Mr. Young?
So going off of Johnson's comment, for a study session, and this is for Adam, to dedicate some time for transportation, I mean, the millage has been out, and we've talked about it in bits and chunks.
I think there's an update in May, but if you want that ahead of time, I can add that to definitely a study session, way before May.
Wouldn't that depend on where we're at with, where Adam was taking the...
Actually, there's things happening before April first with transportation, so we'll definitely push that up. Do you agree, Adam?
Yeah.
Okay, so pushing that up to, well, before that, probably February study session, if that works for everyone?
Yeah, that would be good, because kind of what we're doing, and then how these, are the dots starting to get connected?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman has a question?
I'd like to have some information on trauma-informed care.
Okay.
And generational trauma. I went to a training this past Thursday and Friday, it was excellent.
So overall scope of it, or data that we have of it?
One of the things I'd like to see, I don't know if we could do it or not, for the board to view the movie Resilience, because it talks about the biology of trauma, and it would help to understand better why certain populations act, react, and respond the way that they do depending on the childhood trauma that they experience, and why punitive measures don't work in those instances. And I don't think we've ever done anything like that before, but I would really like for the board to see it. Pastor Jones, I believe you've already seen it, yeah, but if you haven't seen it, it's very educational.
It's eye-opening and informative, I think it would be very beneficial to all of us to be able to see that, see that, okay?
Thank you.
As we deal with these mental health issues.
But along with that, Sheila, what we are doing, and any data that we have on trauma-informed would be good to go along with that.
Okay. Okay, and so you can just provide me feedback, email me, or let me know next Tuesday if you want anything slotted in, that'd be very helpful. Thank you. I just want to make sure you guys are getting what you guys want to hear.
Okay, moving right along, events and outreach. Suzanne Wiener.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not able to attend in person, I'm not feeling well this evening as well. I'm joining the club of individuals not feeling well. So I'll make this brief, I just wanted to outline some things going on for December. We did our annual adopt a family initiative, it was a staff-led initiative where we adopt families from Oakland Family Services and Community Housing Network, and we did some deliveries of those items today. Also wanted to mention that, Tricia already mentioned this earlier in the meeting about the co-responder program, we did have someone from the Justice Team attending the City Council meeting tonight regarding that co-responder initiative in Madison Heights. And also, we have, our access team is providing a short presentation at the Pontiac City Council meeting, the Public Safety and Wellness Subcommittee, later this week. Moving on to the January, next slide, please, to January initiatives, events are starting to ramp up in the new year, we'll be doing our needs assessment, as well as with the presidential election year, initiating that, we'll be initiating our voting webinars for the new year. And we'll be hosting our law enforcement appreciation breakfast, that's going to be on January the ninth, so we hope that you can attend, if you're able. We also have Dr. Pozios presenting at the Kevin Song Conference at the end of the month, and we'll be participating in the point in time count. The next slide, just to go over some of our press releases, we already put out a mental health and holidays press release, and actually, it was the Chief Finance Officer, so Cheryl Johnson's press release went out earlier this month, and we'll be putting out our SUD housing initiative with some FAQs and a flyer about that housing initiative this month, as well as some information about our SINAR reporting, which is related to substance use disorder prevention initiatives. And then, in terms of our redetermination efforts, we're continuing with the letters and our social media and website. We also did our postcard mailing that I mentioned last month, it went over, went to over seventeen thousand individuals in various communities, such as Waterford, Pontiac, Madison Heights, Hazel Park, and Southfield. And then, as some of you attended the Tri-County meeting on the end of November, it was a really rich discussion about sharing ideas across the region, and I am connecting with some of the counterparts for some of our collaborative efforts to work with the redetermination efforts across the region. Also wanted to mention that we hosted Leadership Oakland this month for their annual, or their monthly session, and I'm part of Leadership Oakland for this class, so I was glad to host it at our building. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions?
We can just add, Dana, you have an interview for Thursday.
I will be on Channel Two, Amy Adams is interviewing me, Dave Pankatay from McComb Community Mental Health, as well as Eric Doh from Detroit Way Integrated Health, on the mental health and stress of the holidays, and so we'll be able to talk about the resources that are available in the community. So it started off as a few minutes of airtime, it's turned to an half-hour live interview on Thursday morning, eight AM. So the other thing I did want to mention, I didn't see on the January calendar of events, we will, and we're planning to have our annual legislative breakfast at the end of January, I can't recall the exact date, but that was something that was hugely successful last year, great turnout, and a lot of people are asking for us to do it again, and we definitely want to make sure that we connect with legislators and put the issues on the table. So I want to remind you and invite you to any of our events, you're always welcome. Thank you. And some people are under the weather, because we had a fun party on Friday, I think.
And the legislative event?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll go out shortly, correct Suzanne, within the next week?
Yes, we're finalizing the date for that, and we'll send, we'll send it out, put a flyer out for both the law enforcement breakfast, we can put that on Boardable, possibly, Sheila, and then once we have that date finalized for the legislative event, we'll put that out as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
We are now down to our second opportunity for public comment.
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand.
Is there anyone in the room? Hearing none, we will now go to board members' comments. Mr. Furman?
I'd just like to thank all the staff responsible for these very informative, very thorough presentations tonight. As always, your time is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Dr. Giles?
No comment.
Ms. Newman?
Turn it on. I also want to echo Adam on the quality presentations that were done tonight, very informative, and I also would like to wish everyone a happy holiday, safe, happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes, at the executive board meeting, we discussed the idea of a board retreat, perhaps on a Saturday morning, so I've asked Sheila this week to get to everyone some Saturdays in January and February, and if you could let us know your availability, I'm thinking of the idea, and I've certainly input, but, you know, maybe eight-thirty to noon, and we could finish with lunch together, we could possibly do it at an outside location, we could do it here. The idea is really, this is our retreat. It's, no offense, it's not the staff's retreat, it's our retreat, so I want to make this topics and issues that you feel you want to discuss, I kind of have a vision of maybe an hour at some point, where it's just, you know, whatever topic you want to bring up and talk about, or something, something you'd like to see the organization pursue, or how can we do something? So this hasn't been done in a while, I think Dr. Hans mentioned to me a while ago about possibly having this retreat, so I give her all the credit for the inspiration, and I just want to follow through, so I think we got to start with dates.
With your permission, Ms. Collins, I'll send out a survey.
Yeah, that'd be great.
With the dates, and then pass availability, and maybe even some topics.
Right, and we can, you know, we don't necessarily need an outside facilitator, but we could, if there's a topic that maybe we need to have someone come in to speak about, that's a possibility. to speak about, that's a possibility too. I wanna make it as, at least a burden on the staff to provide information. Maybe there's some data we'll need. But I think this is a chance for the board to get together, an opportunity. We don't have the meetings, you know, all have a kind of a format to them, and this would give us an opportunity to have a little bit more freewheeling discussion among ourselves and to be able to help continue to build those relationships on the board, as well as look into the future a little bit about what we're looking at, other than just the day-to-day issues, you know? What will we look like in three years, five years, those types of issues? So I'd encourage everybody to think out of the box a little bit about things you'd like to talk about. Or I know many of you have bet on other boards or participated in supporting boards in some way. If you saw something that worked, that would be a good idea for our group. Other than charades, I won't do that. So if, we'll start with the date, and then we'll kinda go from there and work on an agenda and come up with a good program for us, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yes.
When we had board retreats in the past, we did the majority of them at local hotels in the area.
Okay.
So I just wanted to put that out there that we have secured outside facilities to do it.
And I think that's a great idea. That was mentioned when we had our executive committee. And maybe that's a good idea to go to another spot nearby. It's convenient for everyone. All right, thank you. That's my only comment.
Mr. Young?
Thanks. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work that went into the experience survey. And I would just say, half kidding, half serious. You almost need a question on top. What's, how's the day going for when the person is filling it out? Getting these personally, you know, if Joe Young's having a really good day, you're gonna get high marks. If we're having a really bad day, it might be less so. So I appreciate that this is taking a Polaroid of a flying freight train going by. But the data is important. We do appreciate your efforts on it.
Mr. Lansky?
Thank you. I wanna thank Trish, Cheryl, and Patrick, Wendy and Lindsay for putting together their various presentations tonight, and those that helped them as well. So I am a data geek, so I do like that stuff. And I do like how it helps us give direction to where we could be going. Also put a plug in that in about a month and a half from now, first week in February, we have a CMHA conference in Kalamazoo. So that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. What's that, fifth, sixth, seventh? So just pencil that in on your calendars. That's February fifth, sixth, and seventh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Great time to go have a really warm retreat away at Kalamazoo and driving ninety-four. But again, thank you all for putting these presentations together and the effort that goes into it and the things we don't see. So thank you.
Pastor Jones?
I want to echo everyone about the great work of the staff. I tell you what, their commitment, dedication, and what they do is just excellent. Just excellent. And so I wanna thank them very, very much for that and the comments of work that is being done. I also want to mention the Greater Pontiac Community Coalition Committee of Fifty, which I serve, we will celebrate our thirty-second year of celebrating the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior event. That's gonna be January the fifteenth. And we give this drumbeater award. And in the thirty-three years that I've been with them, we've only given out twelve. And one of the persons who is going to be a recipient of that drumbeater award on January the fifteenth is our director, Dana Lansky. And so I'm pretty excited about that in relation to recognizing her and the other three persons that will be getting that award. But the work you guys do certainly shines through as a drumbeater. Thank you.
Dr. Hans?
Well, I also want to thank the staff for all the presentations, especially the survey. I think in a very long time, this is one of the more meaningful information in that respect that we have received. But I think our work has just started. And I think it gives us some ideas as to what direction we should be going and what the community needs. Thank you.
Mr. Torres?
No comment. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of the rest of the board in terms of the completeness of the reports that were given on tonight by the various staff members. Thank you. We stand adjourned.